Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Wow, this is a packed house. We are going to have to build a new building. All right, well, I'd like to welcome everyone here in attendance this evening. Today is Monday, December 11th, and this is a special meeting of the City Council reorganization. So after calling this meeting to order, I would like to introduce our daily city police officers, the honor guard to post colors. And if I can have everyone, please stand, please.
Ready. Free them. Freeze them. Forward.
Thank you. If I can have everyone, please remain standing. If I can kindly call up Mustafa Abu Zariyah. Are you here this evening? And come on up. Would you take part of the lecturing? And Janelle Ferraro. Please stand on the side. There you go. And then what I would like the both of you to do as our students, if you will kindly lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Here's the microphone right there. Don't be afraid. Come on, step up to the mic. There you go. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And if I can have Ms. Fatima Youssef, who will lead us in the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? At the rocket's red glare, the bombs burst in air, gave proof through the night; not a flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so... Thank you so... Thank you so much. Before we begin... Oh, you guys go ahead and have a seat. Thank you so much. All right, thank you. Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to again welcome everyone to Daily City's reorg. And before we begin, I would like to acknowledge some of our dignitaries and folks here this evening. So to conserve on time, when I call your name, would you kindly just raise your hand and everyone hold your applause? Because we're going to be here all evening if we don't. So before we begin, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen, Mr. Gengona, Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. All right. For our elected officials, Mr. Mark Nagalis, representing Congresswoman Jackie Speer. Senator Scott Weiner, did he come in yet? Okay. Assemblymember Phil Ting. San Mateo County Supervisor David Canepa. All right. San Mateo County Sheriff Carlos Bolanos. Honorable Counsel General Mr. Henry Bensuto. Former San Mateo County Supervisor Ms. Adrienne Tissier. Jefferson Union High School District Trustee Rosie Tejada. Rosie? Ah, there you are, okay. Jefferson Elementary School Board Marie Brazuela. Marie, where are you? Marie, okay. We also have Clayton Koo from the Jefferson trustee, Jefferson Elementary School District. Clayton, is that you behind the wall there? Okay, very good. Got you. Arts and Cultural Commissioner Ms. Elizabeth Espinda. Oh, that's a fire call. I can hear them from out there. All right. Arts and Culture Arlene Das Magbos for Daily City. Hi, good evening. She's the vice chair. We also have the President from the Bay Shore School Board, Joy Gutierrez Pilare. Good evening. The Vice Chair of the Library Commission Lynn Shimbunka. Oh, okay, thank you. Library Trustee Patricia De Vera for Daily City. All right. Vice Chair of the Planning Commission Rod Das Magbo. Okay, all right. And we also have the Chair of the Planning Commission, Ms. Pamela Di Giovanni. Okay. Former Supervisor John Avalos. Okay, thank you. President of the P.O.A., Lee Aquila. Thank you, Lee. Secretary of the P.O.A., Luke Taylor. Where's Luke? Over here, okay. Ten-four. President of the Daily City Firefighters Local 1879, Nick Garcia. All right, I see up there, okay. And I want to also thank all the folks who are here this evening, the Daily City Firefighters, the various police officers and detectives. Moving ahead, we have a former treasurer, Mr. Tony Zidich. Hi, Tony, thank you so much. Our current treasurer, Ms. Danica Halverson. Thank you, Danica. And we also have a former Planning Commissioner, I saw him earlier, Howard Edelman. There you go, Howard. All right. We also have Sonia Dellen, the California State Commissioner on health. Sonia, where are you? Hi, Sonia, thank you so much for coming. All right, let me look around the room. President of the P.O.A., I got them both already. I got Luke and Lee.
And Ask Me.
Oh, I'm getting there. Now, folks, you can't miss them, but we have the folks from Ask Me, and these are our city workers, and this is very important to them. I'd like to welcome all the employees and staff and the union of Ask Me. All right. Now, Teresa Perano, Commissioner, Planning Commissioner. Hi, Teresa. Okay, so, did I forget anyone?
N U H W.
N U H W. National Union Healthcare Workers Union, thank you so much for coming down. All right. All right. Anybody else? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Christine, I see you, former Commissioner, trustee for the Mosquito and Vector Control District. All right, Ms. Perla Aburantios. Okay, got you. I think I should go down the list and introduce everyone in the audience and have everyone stand. All right, so let's move on. Now we can give a round of applause for everyone here. You know, thank you, Madam City Attorney. I think that's only happened twice ever since I've been up here, so that's pretty good. All right, but I hate to scare you like that. My apologies. All right, what I would like to do now is make some presentations. I do have some presentations up here as well from Assemblymember Phil Ting, who will join me in giving presentations. I'd like to first start off with the Citizen of the Year Award. A little bit about the Citizen of the Year. This person has immigrated to this country back in 1969. And since that time, this person has been involved in various aspects, either in a professional and dealing with city, local government, and until this very day, since 1995, has been part of the Personnel Commission of the Jefferson Elementary School District here in Daily City. This person is also has done volunteer for the Filipino Bayan Nihan Resource Center for two years, was a Board of Director for the Filipino Bayan Nihan Resource Center, and also a Dance Troop member. Apparently, there's lots of information on this particular person, but it gives me great honor to present the Citizens of Award to Ms. Sonia Reyes. Ms. Reyes?
Still looking for parking.
Still looking for parking? Okay. All right, well, we'll come back to her, all right? Thank you. Thank you, Tita. The next item is the Mayor's Youth of the Year Awards. Now normally this is selected for one youth, but at this particular time, I felt that it should be male and female. So what I've done is I've chosen two youths for this award, and I would first like to start off with Mustafa Abu Zariyah. He's an eighth grader, and he attends and he volunteers at Thomas Edison twice a week, helping students and teachers. He helps run all the monthly themed activities at Fernando Rivera, weekly lunch activities like walkathons, games, contests. This year, he just helped run a successful sock campaign at the School for Families in Puerto Rico, and an undies program for everyone in Texas. He has hosted a poetry slam assembly for his peers, and he has emceed and also performed... he also performs as a young man. It gives me great pleasure to present the Students of the Year Award to Mustafa Abu Zariyah. If I can have Honorable Phil Ting also present the award. I'm going to take this down with me. You know what? Since we have two students, let me read the next student also, okay? All right? So we can do them both at the same time. You stay there. The next person I would like to introduce you all, and you see, there's a reason for my madness in that I had them both come up this evening to recite the pledge of allegiance for us. The other student is Janelle Casino Ferraro. Now, Janelle... Janelle, where are you? Janelle, come on up. Come on up. Now, for those who don't know Janelle, she has an outstanding voice. I met her at a couple of events to include her providing her singing at various functions. She started singing at the age of three. And Janelle, I was watching you earlier when the person was singing the Star Spangled Banner, and I watched Janelle because she was looking up to her as an idol. And I can probably fathom what you were probably thinking. I want to be as good as her. And, you know, that really impressed me so much to be so humble that way. Janelle was born in San Francisco, and she started singing at the age of three. Her first public performance was at her church, Crossroads Christian Center. She's a proud member of Pantai Bata Voices, which is based in San Jose, California, and has an awesome, regularly organized fundraising events to benefit underprivileged families and survivors of child abuse in the Philippines. She's a decorated vocalist. Janelle has won an impressive number of awards and honors. In July 2016, she brought home three gold medals and two divisional awards at the World Championship of the Performing Arts, WCOPA. She is a member of the Team USA. In 2016, she won the Golden Voice Anthem Contest, which earned her a spot to the San Francisco Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
Sonia, would you kindly step up? Oh, okay, come on up. 49ers game with her own rendition of the National Anthem, and also sang the National Come on up.
I don't know why I said that.
Oh, Ms. Reyes, I am so sorry, but I read a little bit something about you earlier. Anthem with her choir for the Golden State Warriors.
Yes.
And the audience knows why I selected you. Congratulations, Janelle, and I'm deeply honored to present the Mayor's Student of
Okay.
I want to thank you for your service. You immigrated, let's see if I can remember here, from the Philippines, was it 1969? the Year Award to the both of you.
Yes.
As a teacher?
Yes.
And you've been serving since 1995 in various capacities.
Correct.
For local government and government agencies and et cetera. And you've been a volunteer at the Filipino Bayan Nihan Resource Center.
Correct.
You also served as a director there.
Yes.
And you currently serve on the Jefferson Elementary School Board as Personnel Commission.
Personnel Commission.
Ladies and gentlemen, once again, it gives me great honor to present the Mayor's Citizen of the Year Award to Ms. Sonia Reyes.
Oh, good surprise. Thank you. Surprise, mayor. I didn't want to get...
All right. The next, the last one is the Business of the Year. The Business of the Year goes to someone who, a company that I'm very impressed with, and I see what they have done for the community this past year during my term as mayor. Republic Services, Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Mahoney, please come on up. Republic Services, which has provided recycling and garbage collection services to the city of Daily City for many years. They began their new contract for services, which includes food waste recycling in February 2006, and by the end of 2017, successfully reached their first diversion target of 30 percent. They work hand in hand with businesses, community groups, HOAs, and residents to educate them about programs and services to reduce the amount of materials being sent to landfill. This includes doing waste assessments, presentations, trainings, and providing tools and resources to customers to increase their recycling and composting efforts. I can't say enough about Republic Services. I have much more to say about them, but in a nutshell, Republic Services have done a lot for this community, not only in educating our community, but also taking part in numerous events to include the Daily City Host Lions, North Peninsula Food Pantry, the Dining Center of Daily City, Public Library Associates, the Daily City Youth Health Center, and Recreation Services, PBRC, Pacific Islanders Together, and the list goes on. Mr. Mahoney, it gives me great pleasure to acknowledge Republic Services as the Mayor's Business of the Year for 2017, and I also forgot to make mention, they won, their company was selected in 2017, this past year, as one of the most world's best ethical companies. I congratulate you, sir.
Thank you very much. Oh, it's wonderful. Thank you, sir. All right. Okay.
I'll go after all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, one more? Okay. I had two reminders so far this evening, and I couldn't help myself every time I keep tripping over the flowers. I would like to thank the Daily City COMA Chamber of Commerce for providing the flowers for us this evening. All right, next item is presentation by Assemblymember Phil Ting. Did you have a presentation, sir? No? Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right. Now's the time that I would like to make outgoing comments, and I promise to keep it brief. Where's my big binder? No, I'm just kidding. I'll make, I'll keep it brief. Ladies and gentlemen, one year ago, I was given the opportunity to serve as your mayor. History was created then. The road to learning about our city was a very steep one. Extra responsibilities included the representation of our city on various committees within San Mateo to ensure equity for us. We are the largest city of San Mateo County. I attended many association meetings, schools, community groups, and many more. What I learned was that people need a voice and a chance to be heard. They have concern, and they wanted answers. Although I tried my best not to make promises, but instead to listen and ask why not and why. Transparency is the key, and I've always said, a confused mind will always say no. We have accomplished so much this year in Daily City, to include the Sweeney Apartments that opened up for affordable housing, lots of retail going on in building and ceremony center, and a lot of other things. And I realize that most of these projects began before my tenure. This is based upon the work of staff and my colleagues who had the vision to move forward for our city, and for that, I'm very appreciative. Many have asked that I continue as mayor for continuity. However, I am highly confident that matters put forward will continue with my colleagues. Thank you for the opportunity and trust this past year, and let's continue to build our city with the trust of all of our citizens. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, this is a time for the reorganization of City Council. At this particular time, I'm going to call for nominations for the office of mayor. If I would be humble to start off, at this particular time, I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Justlyn Manalo as mayor. At this time, is there any other nominations for the office of mayor? Hearing none, I am going to request that we close This is based upon the work of staff and my colleagues who had the vision to move forward for our city, and for that, I'm very appreciative. Many have asked that I continue as mayor for continuity. However, I am highly confident that matters put forward will continue with my colleagues. Thank you for the opportunity and trust this past year, and let's continue to build our city with the trust of all of our citizens. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, this is a time for the reorganization of City Council. At this particular time, I'm gonna call for nominations for the Office of Mayor. If I would be humble to start off, at this particular time, I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Justlyn Manalo as mayor. At this time, is there any other nominations for the Office of Mayor? Hearing none, I am going to request that we close the nominations for mayor at this time.
Motion to close the nominations.
Thank you. Uh, second, Vice Mayor? I'll second that, I'll second that nomination. May I have on the nomination for mayor, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Congratulations.
Now, moving on, if there are, we're moving on to the nominations of, well, actually, before we move on to Vice Mayor, I, I would be truly honored if Assemblymember Phil Ting gave me my oath of office.
So if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Justlyn Manalo.
I, Justlyn Manalo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll defend, that I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well.
And that I will, well, will, well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
During such time.
During such time.
As I hold the office.
As I hold the office.
Of Mayor of Daly City.
Of Mayor of Daly City. Congratulations. So I was getting a little ahead of myself, and so, um, at this moment, we'd like to honor, um, our outgoing Mayor Sylvester.
Yes, if I could start, Ms. Madam Mayor, um, let me just say, um, Mayor Sylvester has, I think, been one of the hardest, uh, working mayors, uh, we've had in the city. Uh, for those of you that don't know, um, Mayor Sylvester, uh, basically lives in the office. He is there every day, and the job of mayor, um, it's sort of less than a part-time gig, and this mayor has taken it upon himself from day one to go to that office every day, and not just a cursory, "Let me check my mail," that sort of thing. He's there, he, um, listens to his constituents, he makes appointments, he makes phone calls, he's there with staff, and so he is, um, really, I think, has developed a pulse of the community because of his, uh, work ethic, um, the way he has really kept an open mind and trying to listen to people's concerns, and trying to put things together in an effort to solve, uh, some of the problems we have in Daly City. So, um, I am, yeah, I, I'm very humbled to see this man work. I think you, he has demonstrated extremely strong leadership, and we are blessed here in Daly City to have a man of this caliber lead us in the past year. I look forward to a new chapter here in Daly City with our new mayor and Madam Justlyn Manalo. I think she too will do a tremendous job, but I want to thank you first and foremost, Mr. Mayor, you have done just an absolutely incredible job, Ms. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say, say some comments about, um, Mayor Glenn Sylvester. You know, many times, we were out there, and tirelessly, he was there, you know, at events, at regional meetings, and really, you know, such amazing work ethic as mentioned, and really was there on the ground when he needed to meet any constituents or any matters arise, he really, uh, took charge and ensured that, um, it was taken care of. And so, I, you know, I am so grateful to work with you and continue to work with you, and also just your, your leadership, so we want to give you, um, a thank you. It's a surprise, so.
It's in her bag.
So, on behalf of us on the council, we'd like to present this to you.
Oh, nice.
It reads in, in deep appreciation for your leadership, uh, Mayor Glenn Sylvester, 2016-17 from, um, the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This moment has, um, is surreal, and, and really something so special for me. As many of you know, I, I grew up here in, in the city of Daly City, and being able to serve the community I was raised in in this manner, I'm truly thankful to God, to the community, and to every single person here, um, that has supported me along the way. Um, I take this responsibility greatly, and I, I do see, um, a lot of groundwork in the making, and we need to continue that work, and I also see a vision, a new vision for the city of Daly City, and, um, I am deeply humbled for this opportunity. Actually, the other day, I found... I should move it over here. Thank you very much. Something that I thought I didn't have anymore, and I found my Jefferson track. And cross-country jersey. And when I found this, I, I looked back, and I remember what it taught me. You know, cross-country isn't, um, it's not, it's not one of those races where it's fast and easy. I mean, there's, it's a long race, you do about two to four miles, and what that taught me at Jefferson High School, when I ran cross-country, is perseverance, how to tackle challenges, and also to determination. And I know that in this new role I'm in, there will be challenges, but I am willing to take it on, and not only by myself, it's with my colleagues, the staff, and the community behind me. And so I am deeply honored and humbled to serve as your new mayor. Thank you, Meraming Salamat Po, Gracias, and, um, thank you. We are moving on to our agenda, and, uh, I am now asking for, um, if we have any nominations for the Office of Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would, um, be appreciative and humbled to nominate Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura as Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, um, me, I have a motion.
So moved to close the nominations.
Oh, so moved to close the nominations.
Second.
Okay, nominations are closed. So I call a roll call vote for our, uh, first, our nominee for Vice Mayor, Ray Buena Ventura.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
If you would indulge me, if I could kindly call up Supervisor David Canepa, if you would, uh, humble me and administer the oath.
I, Raymond Buena Ventura.
Raymond Buena Ventura.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Vice Mayor.
The duties of the Office of Vice Mayor.
Of the City of Daly City.
Of the City of Daly City.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
for cake and coffee, um, out in the reception, and, and so at this moment, I call this meeting adjourned.